Good evening and welcome to the December 6, 2017 regular meeting of the Planning Commission. May I have a, may I have roll call please?
Planning Commissioners Astorian.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Manukian.
Present.
Saturian. And Shabazian.
Thank you very much. May I have a report regarding the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was posted on Wednesday, November 29, 2017, on the bulletin board, outside City Hall, and on the city's website.
Thank you very much. Please rise and follow me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no beginning, justice, and for all.
Next order of business is the approval of the minutes for our November 15 regular meeting. Are there any?
Second.
All right. I don't have to do a roll call for that, do I?
Not.
No, I don't, okay. Oral communications, are there any oral communications relating to anything that's not on our agenda? This is all I have. No? Very good. Moving on. We have no zoning appeals, no Planning Commission items.
No.
Old business items. New business.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, yes.
Item number one deals with the property owners, 1343 Balmoral Drive. My residence is located about 474 and a half feet away, which takes me down to less than the 500 feet, and for that I would have to recuse myself in order not to give the perception of any favoritism and/or...
In propriety.
Not in propriety, but decision making that may be for or against the property.
Very good.
With that, I would have...
Mrs. Dukin, today's decision has to do with extension of time, not the substance of the matter. Would you advise that Commissioner recuse himself nevertheless?
Yes, still do.
Very good.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, we can move on to the staff report in this regard, in the Commissioner Astorian's absence. Please.
Thank you, Chairman Manukian, Planning Commissioners. As was just mentioned, the first item is a time extension request, and this would be for tentative parcel map number GLN 1621. The project site is located at 1343 Balmoral Drive. This is a time extension request of an approved tentative parcel map to subdivide one developed lot with a single-family residence into two parcels for the purposes of constructing a new single-family residential unit on the new lot. Parcel 1 contains the existing single-family residence. The property owners are here, and that would be Mr. and Mrs. Kim, the original property owners of the tentative parcel map that was approved back in 2007. And parcel 2 would essentially be the vacant lot proposed for a new single-family residence. The project site, as well as the entire surrounding neighborhood, are zoned R1R, Restricted Residential, floor area District 3. And just to take care of environmental review matters, this particular parcel map was presented to the Planning Commission back in 2007, and along with an initial study, an environmental review, in the form of a negative declaration that was presented to the Planning Commission and approved with the original parcel map, or I should say, was originally adopted, and this would be negative declaration back at that time was given a number, which would be case number 2007-009. The site conditions in the surrounding neighborhood and the existing conditions on the site essentially remain the same as when the negative declaration was adopted by the Planning Commission, and so in this case, there is no further environmental review required at this time for your determination on the time extension request. Again, as was stated, the entire neighborhood is zoned R1R, Single Family Residential, and developed with single-family residential homes. The subject site is a 61,000 square foot lot, approximately 1.4 acres, so rather substantial in size, and irregularly shaped. It's an upslope condition going up from Balmoral Drive up to Sunshine Drive, so it is essentially a through lot with frontage both on Balmoral and on Sunshine Drive. The original tentative parcel map was filed back in February of 2007, and then ultimately approved by the Planning Commission on October 17, 2007. The state, or tentative parcel map was good for a period of 36 months as standard by our subdivision code. The state subsequently has filed several automatic time extensions, so there were a total of four time extensions, and these would be automatic ones issued by the state, so the city does not get involved, and so ultimately that parcel map had an expiration date of December 17, 2017, so it essentially expires within a few weeks. The applicant ultimately filed a time extension request and also submitted reasons as to why they did not move forward within the last 10 years for the parcel matters, and various personal reasons, and health reasons, and family reasons, and whatnot. So they are in the process of moving forward today. They have submitted a grading plan to grade the building pad as required by our subdivision map, or subdivision map act, and in this case, our subdivision code. So they are proceeding slowly, but because the parcel map expires ultimately on December 17, they are requesting, or I should say, they filed a request for an additional 24 months. According to our codes, they are allowed to ask for up to 36 months, and staff is recommending that 36 months be considered by the Planning Commission, so an additional three years. Because essentially, the site conditions, the neighborhood, ultimately everything remains the same, staff is supportive. This matter has been reviewed by our Public Works Department and is supportive again, but because the tentative tract map is expiring, they need to move forward with a time extension. It has been found to be consistent with the general plan, as was deemed consistent back in 2007 and still remains today, and there's no compelling reason why the time extension request should be denied. So staff at this point is recommending an approval by the Planning Commission to extend its tentative tract map for an additional 36 months. That concludes staff's brief presentation. I'm available to answer any questions you may have, and the parcel map and photos of the existing site and neighborhood are located on the panels behind you.
Very good. Okay. Any questions of the staff? I don't have any cards relating to this project. Clearly, the applicant may speak as a matter of right.
Correct. Mr. and Mrs. Kim are in the audience, and they are here only to answer any questions you may have.
And I'm willing to entertain a motion. Please move.
Upon consideration of a time extension request for parcel map GLN number 1621, said parcel map is hereby approved for three years to expire on December 17, 2020. The subdivision continues to be consistent with the general plan, and there are no compelling reasons to deny the extension request.
With that, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
May I have a roll call, please?
Planning Commissioners Lee.
Aye.
Shabazian.
Yes.
And Chairperson Manukian.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Moving right along. Can we call our dearly departed...
In a week.
Very good. Moving on to item number two. Glendale Municipal Code Amendment, case number PZC 1727279. Location: citywide. Applicant: city of Glendale.
Yes.
Staff report by Kristin Asp.
So, Mr. Chair, in my case, extraordinary events happen in pairs. What I'd like to do is first to make a disclosure that this issue of ADUs were presented in front of the Board of Directors of Glendale Association of Realtors, and I am an active member as well as a Board of Directors' Director. So I'm going to turn to the city attorney, though I have a sense that because this is a citywide ordinance, and that it does not involve any one project or development that I may have interest in, and that it may meet the common law definition, and that there is no divided loyalty, these are the things that I've been thinking and consulting with you. I wanted for you publicly tell me what is the right course of action. Do I participate in this conversation or not? Because I do have, without going into details, a couple of very personal opinions about how this has to proceed, especially with size.
Planning Commission Member Astorian and the members of the Planning Commission, I'd be happy to give you my thoughts on that, and the city attorney's really our office's thoughts on this issue. In this particular situation, because it's a legislative act and not a specific development project that we're talking about, as well as the fact that this is a recommendation to the city council, the fact that you are on the Board of the Realtors, and the Realtors have taken a position on this ordinance, it does not, in our opinion, rise to the level of requiring recusal. Just because we don't strongly advise recusal does not mean that you cannot choose to recuse yourself if you feel that you cannot separate your personal opinions from the position of the Realtors as a whole. The issue would only be an issue if there was divided loyalty between your position on the Board and your position as a member of the Planning Commission to make a decision for the whole city, citywide. So with that, with this disclosure, if you feel that you need to recuse yourself, we would be supportive, but we don't necessarily recommend that.
And I agree with you, I will not recuse myself. I would like to add also that in the past 32 years, I've not dealt in any one residential property. Most of my practice, if not all of it, has been in the commercial arena, so even to top it off, I don't feel that I need to recuse myself, but I wanted to bring that up and make that disclosure public. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
There we have it. Ms. Asp?
Yes.
Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission. Tonight's topic is about accessory dwelling units. So a little background, beginning of this year, January 1, several state laws went into effect that essentially requires all of California to permit accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, to be permitted administratively. So in preparation for that, staff prepared an interim ordinance, was adopted in February, it expires in February of 2018, and it essentially repeals a previous ordinance that the city of Glendale had, which prohibited all second dwelling units or granny flats. So that's off the books, and we are now in the world of ADUs in Glendale. So I'm going to outline basically the interim ordinance. There are very few changes other than some organization for the permanent ordinance that we're recommending for you tonight, and then I'll go into the focus group and some of the discussion we had at the end. So I just want to get you up to date on what the standards are, what rules we're working with, because you guys have never seen it, it has only been to council as an interim ordinance. So as I said, ADUs have to be ministerially approved, which means no design review board, no CEQA. ADUs are permitted on any lot that only has a single-family house. We have limited it to 500 square feet. You can have either an accessory dwelling unit or one guest house, but not both. And just to outline the difference between those two, accessory living quarters or guest houses, which are currently permitted in the city's code today, are allowed up to 500 square feet. They cannot have a kitchen, it requires no parking, they cannot be rented. It does count towards development standards like floor area ratio, lot coverage, landscaping, things like that. An accessory dwelling unit must be independent living quarters. It has to have a kitchen, has to have a bathroom, may require parking, we'll get into that a little bit later, and the difference, it may be rented, and it has to have independent So just general ADU standards, I'll talk about standards and criteria as we go through this. ADUs may be attached to an existing primary residence, they may be detached, or they may convert existing structures on the property, such as a guest house or a garage. Zoning standards or development standards apply to the entire lot, again, like things like floor area ratio, lot coverage, height, landscaping, setbacks, and parking. There are some exceptions, and I'll get to that in a few slides. As with all buildings, they must meet Building and Safety Codes. Fire sprinklers may be required, but only if it's required for the residence as well. Okay, so if you have an attached accessory dwelling unit, this means either maybe within your primary residence or within your attached garage, it must have an independent access without changing the building facade. So I can take my existing house, I can carve out 500 square feet of it, as long as I don't change, that I don't add another front door next to my other front door, you know, that's somehow disguised, that is how I can have an attached ADU. If I want to add on to my house, I can add on to my house in the back, but it has to be a single-story. If I desire a detached accessory dwelling unit, this can be allowed in existing permitted accessory buildings, such as a detached guest house, detached garage. Zoning standards would apply to these, either new construction or conversion of those structures. If it's a garage conversion, many properties in Glendale have a detached garage that sits on the property line. I can convert that garage while maintaining that non-conforming setback on the property. If I'm going to add on to that garage, whether it's single-story, and I'll get to adding a second floor, that new construction has to be five feet from the property line. So this is a bit of a change for Glendale, and probably for many jurisdictions. You can add a second floor on top of a detached garage, up to 25 feet or 28 feet with a pitch roof. But again, the garage may have a five-foot setback, or a zero setback, the addition on top of that garage would have to be setback five feet. Criteria for architectural compatibility, the state allows you to outline specific criteria that can apply, so exterior modifications to an existing building shall be architecturally compatible with the existing primary residence, and must match things like paint, materials, roof lines, things of that nature. New construction for an ADU shall not be between the primary dwelling and the street front or the street setback line. This would be, not very many cases, I suspect, but if you have an excessively large front setback, so say you're not at the minimum typical 25-foot front setback, you have 40 feet, you couldn't place it in between that line. We're trying to get this to be discreet and more in the back. A detached accessory dwelling unit may not exceed 15 feet in height, except for conversions of a detached garage, which I explained earlier. As far as historic properties go, if a property is listed, if it is identified on a historic survey as potentially eligible for California or Glendale Register, if it is within an adopted or nominated historic district, exterior changes to create an ADU shall not be visible from the street, and they shall not alter any defining historical characteristic. So as far as ADUs and parking, garage conversions for an ADU must replace the parking for that residence. So if a typical example, I have a house and a two-car garage, I am not going to build anything new, I'm going to convert my two-car garage, I must replace those two parking spaces for that house on top of whatever may be required for the ADU. So the ADU may require a space as well. This replacement parking of my converted garage and parking for the ADU may be unenclosed, so it does not have to be in a garage, does not have to be covered by a carport, things like that. It, so it can't be, it doesn't need to be enclosed, it can be in driveways, and it can be within a setback. So most driveways typically drive over your front setback, you could park in a sort of tandem situation on your driveway. The uncovered spaces have to meet a minimum dimension of 8 by 18. As I mentioned, they must be tandem, and you couldn't ask for a new driveway, or an additional driveway, to park more cars on your property if you didn't already have a However, in a lot of cases, accessory ADU parking is not required when the property is within a half-mile of a transit stop, it's, the property is historic or in a historic district that's a contributing building, when the ADU is within existing square footage, like the house or a guest house, when on-street parking permits are required but are not offered to the occupants, or it's within one block of a car-share lot, or things like Zipcar, those services. Back to ADU standards that apply to every ADU. Any applicable sewer, water, school district fees are required. For instance, we have Parks and Library fees, so ADUs are subject to that. They are at $4,700, I believe, for the Parks and Library fees for an ADU, which was recently amended by council in July, down from about $21,000. ADUs obviously may not be sold separately from the residential dwelling, they may be, they're intended to be rented, they may not be rented for less than 30 days, and we have a requirement that the property owner is required to either occupy the primary residence or the ADU. If the property owner is not there, the property has to be rented as a single unit, so it couldn't be rented out as a duplex type situation. Again, I mentioned this earlier, fire sprinklers are only required if the primary residence requires fire sprinklers, and fire can require additional setbacks for any fire safety. So we have this interim ordinance, council directed us to have some outreach and focus on three areas, specifically the size of ADUs, ADUs counted as floor area, and maybe revising restrictions on owner occupation. First topic, which was the size of ADUs, we had a small focus group, and we had a, there was a healthy discussion on, you know, could larger, larger-sized ADUs be more appropriate on larger-sized lots, say, things that are over 10,000, lots that are over 10,000 square feet, lots that are over 15,000 square feet. We had a healthy discussion about that. Also talked about 500 square feet is the limit for collection of school fees, so if we allowed a larger ADU, there's the opportunity for the school district to collect school fees. But at the end of the day, the conclusion of the group was that at 500 square feet, it truly does stay accessory to the property, doesn't compete with it, it would be unlikely to change the neighborhood character, and it offers a different type of size and rental unit, different, and not to compete with other multifamily units, such as in the downtown. Kind of tied to that is floor area ratio, you know, whether or not floor area ratio should apply. They concluded that, yes, all development standards should apply to a property, including FAR. I do want to point out here, and I should have pointed out earlier, for floor area ratio and having the development standards apply to whatever zone you're in, if I have a house and a garage, and I am at the max floor area ratio for this property, by our code, we do not consider garages to be floor area ratio. If someone came in and said, "I'd like an ADU," I just want to, I want to, they could either convert up to 500 square feet of their existing residence, so they're not building anything new, or they could convert their garage, which would then count as floor area ratio, that would push them over the floor area ratio, we have to allow that. For an ADU. So while, you know, I said that the floor area ratio, yes, for building new.
So this is a state law?
Correct. So that you can convert...
Watered down.
Existing.
State law. It's not...
Okay, let the report...
So I just wanted to just clarify how FAR can be a little different for ADUs.
Okay.
Owner occupation. You know, had a discussion about changing the owner occupation, like I said, the current rules are, the owner has to live in either the primary residence or the ADU, or be rented out as a single unit. The group kind of felt strongly that it would be better for the neighborhood to require an owner beyond property, whether it's in the house or in the ADU, but that should be the standard. That was their recommendation. Staff doesn't really recommend changing the existing rules, does provide a little more flexibility to an owner who does have an ADU to have the same, you know, opportunity as their neighbor who doesn't have an ADU. If they needed to relocate, or they needed to rent out their house, their neighbor could do it, so could the owner with an ADU, but would have to rent it out as one unit. And there's a covenant that restricts that for ADUs. We had two other topics that came up that were not part of the focus group, and that related to the H overlay, or the area of the city that allows horses, that there was some concern that ADUs could change the equestrian characteristic of the H overlays out. There are, I do have a map, and I'll go back, so this is roughly where the H overlay zone properties are. There are about 211 lots. If the commission is so inclined, you may want to talk about limiting ADUs to just the primary structure, if that's something you'd like to entertain. The additional subject area was ADUs in hillsides, particularly as they relate to emergency vehicle access. The tough one with this is that all of our residentially zoned lots and properties in Glendale are intended for a single-family lot. The guest houses are permitted in all single-family zones, so any property can currently apply for that. The state requires approval of an ADU for all lots with a single-family residence, so even if I'm not building new, I can convert my existing house, I can convert my garage if I can find parking, that may be difficult in some of the, in some, like the Adams Hill area, they may not have room to put parking on their property to convert a garage, so that may not be an appropriate place for an ADU. And no parking is required within a half-mile of a transit stop, and so with all, for all of these reasons, the ability to control an ADU in a hillside is limited. Just to give you some perspective, the hatch marks are the half-mile coverage of all the properties in Glendale that are within half-mile of a transit stop, so majority of...
Are.
...are covered by this, so a parking space wouldn't even be required for an ADU in some of these areas. So that concludes my outline and presentation of the interim ordinance and what we're proposing. I know we have a number of speaker cards, I know there were a number of emails that came in that covered the gamut of keeping limits at 500, owner occupied, floor area ratio, I think a few sprinkled in there are consideration of a larger ADU unit, but that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Very good. Are there any questions from the commissioners before we go to the public?
You mean from Ms. Asp?
Yes.
I have a question.
I have questions, but go ahead.
Please go ahead.
That's all right.
I needed a clarification, actually. So on the height of the ADU units, if it's built on top of a garage, it can go as high as 25, but if it's built as a completely new unit, it goes as high as 15? I just wanted to understand that correctly.
Correct.
Okay, correct. Thank you.
Why is that?
Um... As a detached accessory structure, it's consistent with our fifteen-foot height limit for all detached accessory structures. The state has said you, you must allow ADUs above a garage. So we needed to raise that height. And we made twenty-eight, twenty-five with a twenty-eight-foot height limit, consistent with the, with the R1 height.
So if somebody wanted to build a single-family home today, it has to be fifteen feet height? If it's a one-story house?
No.
Then.
If, if somebody wanted to build a single-family house today in an R1 zone.
Right.
They're limited to twenty-five feet in height with a twenty-eight.
So why are we limiting the ADU to fifteen feet?
The ADU is a detached structure.
Right.
Would likely be a single-story.
Right.
So, and fifteen feet makes it accessory to the, to the main house.
Why wouldn't seventeen feet or twenty feet make it an accessory?
It, it just makes it consistent with the, the rules we already have for accessory structures, guest houses, things like that, consistent with our.
So the rule that we have on the books right now is that our guest houses cannot exceed five hundred feet?
Correct.
And that they're limited to fifteen feet?
Correct.
Height?
Correct.
Is that the reason why nobody builds them?
No, we have plenty of guest houses in Glendale.
Okay.
You asked a question?
No, I was just gonna say it would be difficult to have a two-story unit that is smaller than five hundred square foot.
Right.
That's, I would assume. I was just gonna answer to that.
I had a question about the equestrian neighborhoods. You said that having ADUs there would change the character of the neighborhood?
The concern we had from, the, the comment we had was a concern that ADUs would change the character.
How would they, I mean, clearly, no, do, do you know?
I, I think you could ask the, I think, is somebody here for? Okay, okay.
Okay, cool. All right. All right, then with that, I
We, I, I have follow-up questions, go ahead.
The comment that I made regarding that conversion of a garage not counting towards the FAR even though, you know, the combination of, or conversion of the garage exceeds the, the FAR. So is that the case right now?
Comment again?
So if conversion of the garage exceeds the maximum FAR that's allowed for the law. You're saying state isolation is such that
We have to allow it.
You have to allow it?
Correct.
And is that the direction that we're going from the city?
Correct.
We have to go with that. I just wanted to note, and correct me if I'm wrong. This is as, part of the state's attempt to increase the number of
Affordable housing.
To address the housing crisis in, in the state of California, correct?
All right.
I, I have a.
Oh, you had a follow, you're the one with the follow.
The, 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 this issue of the FAR. If you, if the house is, the existing house on a lot is, is, is at its maximum FAR. But they do have a backyard. They want to build, be able to build the five hundred feet, assuming it meets most everything that you have here. They don't want to convert their garage, want to put a new structure. How would that work? Would, would then the city allow them?
They would be prohibited. So their options for an ADU, so their other options are to convert their garage.
Or build on top of it.
Or convert, they couldn't build on top of it because that would be new square, that would be new square footage. They could convert part of their existing structure or convert their garage in a situation where you're maxed at your FAR.
So you can give up your square footage of the interior of your, the main house?
Convert your existing square footage, correct. Up to five hundred square feet.
It basically makes the property owner put their money where their mouth is.
So, so, so I, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't follow that analogy, but seriously, because I, this is important, I want to understand this. If you have an attached garage and you are at maximum FAR. You take your garage and you want to build in, can you build a structure on top of it up to twenty-five feet?
It is, so in your situ, in your scenario where you're maxed at floor area ratio, you are not building anything new. You are only converting, whether it's the existing house or the garage.
How would that be consistent with the state law?
It's.
That they tell you that you gotta allow them to build an accessory dwelling?
Right, so you, you are allowed to have an accessory dwelling unit, you just can't build a new one. You have to convert what you already have, whether it's your house or your garage.
Within the FAR.
In order to get it.
So it has to be within the FAR, is what you're talking about?
It is converting the garage.
Which is not part of the FAR.
Which is not part of the FAR. Gets you, in, in essence, more floor area ratio than you would be allowed to normally because you're making it an ADU and you are converting existing, an existing structure.
Understand.
Okay.
The discussion that you said that you had with the task force. Which, by the way, I was invited, I did not attend, just so that I would not be, you know, I would have a clear slate on, on decision-making on this thing. What, that discussion about the size? How, I, I understand that the five-hundred foot size is on the books and it was the easiest thing to do without being intrusive to our neighbors and so forth. What was that discussion? Can you give us some insight about the size discussion with the task force?
I, I can give you a little, a brief, and I know some, some task force members are here, so if they want to
Okay, maybe.
Add to that.
That's good.
Questions regarding the task force may be the best left for after the public speakers.
Okay.
But in the meantime, we have a comment.
Yeah, I have one more question. I just want to be clear on this. So you do not build anything at the front of the house. Some of the garages, attached garages are in line with the house. Or some of them may be actually coming out.
Okay.
You know, more than, more than the house. And then you convert the garage and you need to have an access door to that and all that. So when you make that conversion of that garage, is that allowed?
It is, if you can, if you can, you know, not have a front door facing the street, you have to.
The side door.
Right, we'd look at where you would, where you would provide that access.
If you can hide it somehow.
Correct.
Okay.
I have one last clarification I want to ask. So in the, the last map that we looked at, where, where you were showing us the areas where the ADUs wouldn't require a parking space. Is this a state law or is this something that the city of Glendale is?
This is state law.
Okay.
That says you don't have to, you don't have to require, you cannot require a parking space and you're within half-mile of transit stop.
Thank you.
To clarify once and for all. What aspects of the state, are there any aspects of the Glendale, proposed Glendale code that deviates from the state?
Uh, there are a number of things that deviate from the state, I believe.
Okay, then never mind.
There was a
I, I don't want to.
Attachment to your report that kind of compared.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I meant, just clarify deviation. There's nothing in the code that is not allowed by the state.
Okay.
It, it may not meet the maximums allowed, but there's nothing in the code that deviates. It is all allowed by the state.
Understood. Very good. We're gonna go to our public speakers. Let's begin with Joanne Hedge.
Hey, good evening.
Good evening, ma'am.
My commissioners, Chair Menuchaian. My name is Joanne Hedge and I am president of the Glendale Rancho Neighborhood Association. I'm a twenty-two-year resident of the Equestrian Neighborhood, which has a partner in the Burbank Rancho. And they are also confronting this issue. I am a huge supporter of more affordable housing and I think there are a lot of ways to get there. Rent stabilization might be a thought. But at any rate, back to where I am, and your particular question earlier tonight. How would the ADUs interfere with the character? It's far more than the character, it's the horse facilities on the properties which make us special. And have historically for seventy, eighty more years than I've been around. I'm bragging about how young I am. But what we would like to know, to have ensured, is that the horse facilities on properties, the stables, the barns, the little turnouts and so on, not be torn down to become an ADU. That's all we're asking. Garage, all the other things that were mentioned tonight, fine. We just, I mean, we do have concerns, like many people in the city, that I'm sure were voiced by the task force, which I wish I'd been invited to. Regarding narrow streets, density, little lots, we have like six-thousand-square-foot lots. We also have some that are much larger along Riverside Drive, for instance, I'm sure you've seen them, they're great big estates. We have, in my count of just my section of the rancho, which is horse-zoned. We have, it was a very rough count, but we have what seems to be almost a third of the residences, the properties, the horse properties already have guest quarters and little AD, we don't call them ADUs, but they're referred to as granny flats, mostly guest, guest houses. So we're busy renting those to people. But of course, it's clear that this effort mandated by the state is to provide affordable housing, not cash cows for somebody who wants to get two thousand a month from five hundred square feet. So, and I'm all for that, and we are, and we understand. We have a lot of people living in the rancho who are blue collar, low to moderate income. Not all of them are wealthy and to own a horse, you don't even really have to be wealthy, you just turn over everything you make to the horse. But anyway, this is just something we would like to have special. And I have learned from realtors in Burbank who prize both the Burbank and Glendale ranchos on their rosters. And also that there is a code, and I haven't confirmed this, but in city of Los Angeles, also going through this consideration for the ADUs, that, that Los Angeles is going to exempt their horse areas. Shadow Hills, Calabasas, Lake Uterus. So that's for staff to check on, but it's a serious matter of not wanting to abandon the special, unique, historic character, which is that you can keep a horse or two at home and come home from the studio at night you work at nearby at Disney and ride to unwind. And that is a, a, a big selling point on rancho properties with realtors and with both buyers and sellers. And we would like to perpetuate that feature for good reason. And we have a lot of businesses that depend on horse-keeping as well. So if you have any questions to ask me, I'm happy to answer.
So basically, you're asking for a carve-out of your neighborhood?
Yeah. Which other neighborhood, other cities are asking as well?
Ms. Asp, right now, what you're proposing does not include that carve-out.
Correct.
Understood.
Okay.
And just to follow up, there are no requirements, there are no state laws that have any, any specific regulations for H zones?
Yeah. Thank you. So it just mean that if someone decides they want an ADU, it could not involve the removal of their horse facility, no matter how simple and rudimentary to how fancy and gorgeous they are, like mine, for instance.
Very good.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak.
I have Catherine Jura.
Hello.
Hi, my name is Catherine Yurka. Good eve, it's okay, my, my writing. Good evening, Chair Menuchaian and members of the Planning Commission. I'm here on behalf of the Verdugo Woodlands West Homeowners Association and I hope to do justice to our former president, Myrna Stanley, who recently moved to Texas. I'm grateful to staff for creating reasonable standards to guide the approval process, both in the interim ordinance again, and again in the final draft ordinance. I think the central issue here for ADUs is that there's no design review and no opportunity for public hearing or public comment. I, I would like to note that when that seemed quick. I'd like to note that when council heard comment on the interim ordinance, some fifty people attended and about twenty-five people spoke. And my thoughts correspond with what all but one speaker, the only person to speak on, on behalf of more expansive ADUs had to say. We think it is particularly important that the floor area ratio not be increased to allow for the construction of ADUs. We're already facing a fairly significant issue with mansionization in our neighborhoods. And we note that given that ADUs can be, must be allowed in converted garages and also must be allowed within a portion of the existing residents, there's really no intrinsic reason to increase the floor area ratio to make them possible. We also believe that five hundred square feet is an appropriate maximum, both for the, for the reasons that Ms. Asp begave. But also, I attended the affordable housing meeting yesterday that was, that was part of the Housing Authority meeting. And staff reported that by far the greatest affordable housing need in our city is for people making less than thirty-five thousand dollars a year, with fifteen to twenty-five thousand dollars a year being really the sweet spot. And, you know, as a member of, as a member of the Board of the HOA, you know, I'm, I'm concerned about the impact on our neighborhoods of larger units. But also as someone who's deeply interested in affordable housing, it seems clear to me that the most impact relevant to our needs will be with smaller rather than larger units, just because they will, people will charge less for them. We're also asking the Planning Commission to add or suggest an owner occupancy requirement for ADUs. California law specifically allows that in its, the guidance that it published. It says cities may require that. And some two dozen residents at the council meeting spoke on behalf of that provision in January. They would like to make sure that owners can be there to deal with issues that may come up with tenants. And also, out of a concern that flippers may, you know, throw up an ADU and then move on. Because remember, there's no design review. And staff mentioned in the report, they were rejecting owner occupancy because it's hard to enforce, but we don't find that very persuasive. We don't think owner occupancy would be more difficult to enforce than requiring that both units be rented to the same tenant. We, we do have a question that we're hoping the commissioners will ask staff, because I know I don't have the right to question staff. The interim ordinance prohibited adding a story to a house to create an ADU. And that was because of the lack of design review. The current ordinance only requires that an exterior addition for an ADU be a single-story. And those aren't the same things. And I was wondering exactly what that means and if, if Glendale's no longer going to prohibit people from adding an ADU just as a second story if that's required by the state. It just seems that in the absence of design review, it's probably not a good idea to let someone plunk down a second story on a single-story home. And, oh, I, I also had one additional concern, which is that currently, and this is, I think, may not come before you very often, but currently garages can be built within the interior setback, detached garages can. And it seems to me that if those garages can be converted to ADUs or have a second story added to them, if those garages are going to be residences, that it might make sense to amend the residential district setback requirements so that you can no longer build garages within that interior setback. Obviously, that's not a, a problem of the ADU ordinance, but it's, I think it's something worth considering. Thank you for your time.
Actually, hold on, before you go. The five-hundred-square-foot that you were referencing, that is the maximum that an ADU can be, right?
Correct.
In Glendale.
In Glendale, yeah, in Glendale. So your, your suggestion is that instead of it being five-hundred, it'd be four-hundred, three-hundred?
Oh, no, we're fine with five-hundred, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right, no, no, no.
Yeah, no.
And then as far as the second story as an ADU, given that, I don't, I can't see how a second story could be used as an ADU given that you have to have an entrance for it, right? Independent entrance.
Right, so to, to address, if I can start back with her question.
Yes.
The, the single-story, that, that comment was absolutely, the intention is not to allow a second story just for an ADU.
Oh, that's great, because when, when you came.
Single-story meaning, you know, on the ground level. It would not prevent someone from, I have a I have, I have a single-story house, I'd like to add a second story. Go through all the normal design review channels for that. And then now I have existing square footage, then come back later and take that existing square footage and modify it to, to carve out an ADU. You'd have to go about that route.
Yeah, but you would have design review oversight for that.
Right, because it, because your, your initial second story is not for an ADU. You need to ask for a, a second story and then maybe think later about an ADU.
All right. Thank you. May I have Lorna Vartan? May I have Lorna Vartanian, please?
Hello, Chairman Nukian, members of the Commission. My name is Lorna Vartanian, I'm president of the Rossmann Mountain Homeowners Association. Since nineteen ninety-six, the City of Glendale has prohibited second dwelling units on properties within the residential zones in order to control density. For over twenty years, neither city council nor any community group has asked for a change. The only reason we are considering ADUs today is to comply with a new state law which attempts to address an affordable housing shortage in California. The shortage is real, but the problem for built-out cities like Glendale is that a proliferation of ADUs over time will change the quality of life for single-family residents. Fortunately, the new law does allow local governments to regulate certain provisions, such as the maximum size for an ADU, whether or not new construction ADUs must abide by FAR, and whether or not owners are required to live on their property. While some members of council believe ADUs up to eight hundred square feet should be allowed, we believe a maximum of five hundred square feet is reasonable. Five hundred square feet is in keeping with the longstanding maximum for a guest house in Glendale, and it is twenty-five percent larger than a typical garage. By comparison, an eight hundred square foot unit would be equivalent to two standard garages or a two-bedroom apartment. The goal is to create a unit that is accessory to the main house, not to create another house or apartment on the property. The minimum size allowed by law for an ADU is one hundred and fifty square feet. A five hundred square foot unit is more than enough. Some members of council also suggest that new construction ADUs be allowed to exceed existing FAR standards. We disagree. Per state mandate, the conversion of an existing garage can exceed FAR, and the city must abide by that requirement. New construction ADUs, however, should be required to adhere to FAR. Density should remain within the DSP zone, near transit and other multifamily infrastructure for which that zone was created. Additionally, state law allows an owner occupancy provision because the state recognizes that a proliferation of ADUs in cities like Glendale could change the character of single-family neighborhoods. We support an owner occupancy provision because an owner living on site will better limit bad actions by tenants and can better regulate bad actors by virtue of proximity. It will also prohibit investors from buying into our residential areas for the sole purpose of generating income as absentee landlords. And unfortunately, while the goal of the new law is to create affordable housing, there are no provisions to regulate affordability. Let's fill the vacancies in downtown before we create more density, more traffic, and less parking in the single-family neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you very much. May I have Liz Radley, please?
Good evening.
Hello.
I'm a representative also of Glendale Rancho Neighborhood Association, living in the Riverside Rancho in the H overlay zone. Just to reiterate that, we're not against ADUs, but just not the elimination of the horsekeeping facilities in order to put the ADU in its place, either, not to put the, keep the, keep, okay.
Sorry.
We're not against, sorry, we're not against the ADUs, but we don't wish to see the horsekeeping facilities either eliminated or converted in order to allow the ADU to be in its place, because we will lose the historic horsekeeping facilities and completely change, over time, the nature of that, plus the small businesses. You know all of that already. We do support the five hundred square feet maximum. We do support owner occupancy. One note, I saw that on page three, there was a consideration for possibly recommending the ADUs be allowed only within the primary residence. Within the two hundred and eleven approximate residences in the H overlay zone, while there are a lot that are on a single property size, there's also quite a few of much larger, one and a half, two, three, four properties. So that, to say that they would not be permitted to make their ADU as a separate unit because of the concern of what would happen on a smaller lot, perhaps there could be a, if it was over a certain lot size, that the ADU was permitted to be separate and still maintain the horse facilities. I believe I'm reading that sentence correctly. It's on the bottom of page five. Therefore, the Planning Commission may wish to recommend the ADUs be allowed only within the pri, primary residence. That seems too strict, in my opinion, for the larger lots.
What part of page five is your concern?
At the very bottom.
The very bottom line.
Oh, you, you're talking about that, also, that overlay zone.
So, therefore, the Planning Commission may wish to recommend the ADUs be allowed only within the primary residence in the H overlay zone.
And that, I believe, is in there to protect the horse facilities. However, on the larger lots, that would be an unnecessary restriction.
Oh, yeah.
And, and, and so, go ahead.
So, maybe a size, if it's over a certain size, that that might not be needed. Let's see. I think that's pretty much it, except it would be nice to make sure that the ADUs do not cause the neighbors on either side, who may have horses, to then be forced to modify their horsekeeping facilities or habits, because somebody who moves into a new ADU just over the fence, who's maybe not so familiar or comfortable with having horses around, that if that ADU is being placed at the back of the property, for example, still legally, but closer to the, to the horses, that we not then cause the existing horsekeeper neighbor to have to modify their facilities in order to cater to the ADU next door.
So, so what you're suggesting is, if you have a horsekeeping facility, or the, and I think that's what you referred to.
Yes.
That is behind the house.
Yes.
In the Rancho area.
In the back thirty-five feet, as is the rules.
For that horsekeeping facility not to be treated as a garage, to be converted and/or demolished, so you would have an auxiliary unit.
Correct.
But you have no problems if it meets the FAR for that ADU to be built next to the horsekeeping facility.
Correct, as long as it meets the other legal requirements, yes.
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, the whole thing is based on other legal, everything is based on that, right?
It's just that some of the properties are large, and there would be plenty of room to have both.
For the ADU.
Yes.
And some are not, and you're afraid that somebody may come out and demolish the horsekeeping facility.
Or, or convert them, yes.
In favor of the, the ADU.
Correct.
Wouldn't that affect the price value of their property? When you're living in the Rancho, there's a reason why you live in the Rancho, is so you can keep your horses.
Yes.
They're gonna, they're not gonna take the horses down to their bedrooms.
Correct.
Right?
Although some, but no.
They do?
No, they don't.
No, but I think-
Little humor, right?
I think the point is that when Leonard owns one of these properties, and when he wants to move out, he takes his, takes his horses with him, sells it to somebody else, right? That person comes and starts taking the barn and turning, turning it into an ADU and thus reducing the number of horse-
Exactly.
Property, properties, from two-eleven to two-ten.
Or, let's say it reduces from three or four horse facility to one.
Yes.
Although, those are your concerns.
Yeah. Although I doubt that somebody would create an ADU in a part of it.
It would value that property tremendously.
Exactly, yes.
People pay a pretty penny in order to be able-
Indeed.
To have their animals next to them, and as you said, to come home, be able to go out and ride it. And that's, that's a huge advantage for the Rancho.
Sure, I understand.
That's why people buy.
It's proximity to Griffith Park, and all of those facilities are, it, it's unique. You couldn't just go place it someplace else. It really is, all of that is so important. That's why a lot of us moved there.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
If I may point out, while we're, while we're on the subject, regardless of an ADU, now I'm in the H overlay zone, I can have a house, I can have a detached garage, I can have stables, I can have a guest house. There's nothing preventing, you know, forget ADUs today. There's nothing preventing anybody from keeping stables, not keeping stables. There's nothing preventing someone to, I don't want, I don't want to keep horses anymore. I'd rather have a guest house. From somebody moving in to say, oh, I don't want a guest house anymore. I'd like to go back to stables. All that can occur now.
Without the ADU.
Even without the ADU.
Yeah, but I think the, the main concern is, from what I'm hearing, is that they just simply want to make sure that the, the most remote possibility of this new ordinance affecting the, the current use of those two hundred and eleven properties be removed by a simple carve out, which basically says, you can do whatever you want, but you can't remove any horse accessory buildings or any parts of your property which go to that activity.
I, I mean, I would turn to event here, I think that might be problematic if, if your neighbor who wants nothing to do with an ADU wants to remove stables. But if I'm considering an ADU, I, there's no way I can remove stables.
Although there is an argument to be made that if the same neighbor, not in the horse overlay zone, my neighbor wants to remove his garages and not have any garages and park his car outside, though you can't park your, take your horses and, you know, put them outside of your, there, there is an argument to be made of that.
Well, we, we wouldn't let you get rid of your garage in that situation, but.
But you would allow somebody to do away with the horsekeeping facility.
If that's their choice.
That exists. That's the, that's where the argument can be at.
Actually, I have a question. So, if they do have a guest, let's say if you decide to pass this and, and they, they don't get a special treatment. If they have a guest house, they don't qualify to have an ADU already, is that correct?
They could, right, they could have one or the other. They could convert the guest house to an ADU. Thank you.
All righty. Alisa Cunningham.
Good evening, thank you. I'm a little out of my area here, but I work in the Glendale Rancho, and so I have a good bit of experience, and I can tell you a little bit about what's happening in, in Burbank and a little bit of how this relates to Glendale, and in particularly in the Rancho, since that's kind of my area. So, it's correct that the current interim ordinance in Burbank, as it affects the, we don't call it an, a horse overlay, it's, we just call it the Rancho, it's R-one-H zoning, the H for the, for the horse. So, currently, our interim ADU ordinance states that there cannot have an ADU, period, in the Rancho. Ours is up in, our interim is up in April. So, we have not had this meeting yet. So, we're, I'm not sure how that's gonna go and what's gonna change, if the interim is gonna become the, the permanent or, or not, and what changes may be made to it. But that was done, you know, I, I can't speak for the council and on, and all of their deliberations, but for those of us who discussed it, as to why that should be a consideration, we really wanted time to be able to look at it and figure out how you can, how you can have both, not to preclude an ADU in general, because there's lots of reasons to have one. And so, we're not against it just in and of itself. But the thought had more to do with health and safety concerns. Meaning, if you, if you, and we have the same thing, where properties are, or garages are on the property line, you convert that garage into a, now a dwelling unit, and that is in the rear of the property, as some of them are. And the horsekeeping facilities of your three neighbors are also in the rear of the property, and now you're living next door to horses. So, that, and, and you're renting that out, and the tenant may not be all that okay with the idea that Mr. Ed is next door, and the flies, and the dust, and all the stuff that comes with it. So, we wanted time to be able to look at that and figure out how you can have both. I mean, is there a way? Is it, is it case by case? Do you have to look property by property? And I don't know, you know, like I said, we're not there yet. But I would like to just point out that, for me, one of the considerations is, you're, you're absolutely right, when you buy one of these properties, you are paying a premium for that H. You're paying, that's part of your zoning. So, when you're contemplating anything that is gonna affect the ability of that H owner to have those H facilities and those H accommodations that come with their zoning, that's, I think that's an issue, that you have to kind of grapple with. And there are people that will buy in the Rancho because they think it's really cool. Like, it's great to see those horses clipity-clop going down the street. They have no intention of getting horses. You can't preclude them from buying it just because they're not equestrians. They don't understand what's needed for the housing of a horse. They don't get any of that. They just think it's cool to see the horses going down the street, and they want to live there. It reminds them of wherever they came from. You know, we have a lot of people who work in the studios here, and they come from all over the country. And they think it's a very bucolic country neighborhood, they want to live in it, but they don't understand it. So, they don't get what it takes to keep a horse. So, for them, taking a barn and converting it to a guest house that they can make money on, that has way more value to them, and they don't see how that's gonna affect the horses. So, I think protecting not just the ability to keep a horse, to have a horse travel safely throughout the neighborhood, and to also understand that that is part of what these homeowners have paid for, is, and it's part of the zoning that they have. So, I don't know what the answer is that you guys are gonna come to, but I just wanted to give you that perspective, because not everybody, you would think they would get that ruining their horse facilities is taking away a lot of their value, but they generally don't. They generally see it as, but I'm adding value by having a rental, by, I'm adding value by ripping all this out and putting in a pool or whatever it is that they want to do. So, anyway, my time's up, but thank you.
So, let me ask you a question. So, your concern now, because when we talk about a horsekeeping facility, it also includes a barn.
Yeah.
Correct?
It's a barn and a corral.
Out of the two hundred and semi odd number of homes in the Rancho, how many have actual barns as opposed to the corral and, you know, the other facilities?
So, technically, if you're gonna keep a horse, you need a barn. You can't just have them out in the open.
So, long as it is covered, I mean, the roof is covered, you're okay, right?
Well, I'm, I won't speak to your code on what's required for a, a barn. I know we-
I, I know what a barn looks like, and-
Yeah, but there's code in terms of how that's built. It, it has changed, I know, in Burbank, I'm not as familiar with what your current requirements are for shelter for a, a horse, but you cannot just have a corral area. However, your corral, where the horse lives during the day, when he's out enjoying the sunshine, can literally be right next door to that garage that's in the rear of the property that's now a accessory dwelling unit.
Right.
So, did that answer your question? Kind of sort of?
Yes, thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, I don't have any, any other cards. So, with that, I suppose we, huh? We're closing the public comments portion and entering into the deliberative phase.
Please, I, I still want to ask some questions.
You can always ask questions, that, that right is not, you're not precluded.
Sorry, Mr. Chair. Let me take the, the horsekeeping facility and the barn. What's our code, I mean, what is it, what does our code say?
So, um-
Can you take a barn and convert it into an ADU?
Um, you could, if it wasn't on the property line, like you'd have to maintain a five-foot setback from, from any property line, and you're limited to five hundred square feet.
Okay. And, and-
And-
And how do we, and, and how do we define a barn in our code? Is it one with the walls, like, and a door that Mr. Ed's head comes out and walks? Or could it be something that shelters the animal, the horse, with the, with the roof? And so, how do we?
I don't, that may be more of a building and safety question in terms of, of what it looks like and what it needs to have. Our H overlay zone has rules for stables and for corrals. And they're really just restricted to the rear thirty-five feet of a property. And they are restricted like, by the development standards of all single-family homes, which, you know, landscaping, lock coverage, it would be considered an accessory structure. We have a five hundred square foot limit on accessory structures. So, whatever the property allows, based on those numbers, how could you fit a, a, a stable? Which would be, like, the ones that I have seen, four walls, a roof, little opening for the horse's head to, to come and say hi. And then the corrals are really just where you're, where you're exercising, walking.
Okay. Up here.
The definition of what a barn is?
Yes, it's, it is actually on, on your code, um, the, um, under title 30 zoning, chapter 30, 21 horse overlay zone, where it specifies, um, in part, the construction of stables. Private stables for the housing of horses shall be constructed so as to facilitate maintenance in a clean and sanitary condition. Exterior walls shall be constructed as required for permanent buildings. The interior surfaces of such walls shall be finished with smooth, hard, non-absorbent materials. Sheet metal buildings are prohibited. And my note to that is that because of that sense of permanent construction is why the barn might be considered something you could change easily to an ADU, which is why we're so concerned about.
Because the structure already exists, or at least.
You already kind of.
We don't want to.
Skeleton, yes, exactly.
We don't want to say a barn loo, looks like an ADU, but I get it.
It, something that could be easily converted. And that's why we're so concerned.
Okay, fair enough.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, comments from the commissioners?
Well, there was a comment made about the owner occupancy. I think the ordinance, uh, addresses that, Ms. Asp, doesn't it? And in fact, on your page seven of your, uh.
The, the requirement in the interim ordinance and what we're recommending.
Right.
Is the owner occupancy of, of a property with an ADU in the primary residence, in the ADU, if the, if the owner leaves, has to be rented as one rental.
So, so I guess it was, uh, you that you had questioned about that. That, that is being addressed to some, some extent. That's it.
Okay. Uh, I, I can see how, uh, the concern that the rental would, would lead to someone coming in who doesn't necessarily care about, um, their environment and whatnot, goes away when you, when that individual happens to be renting a main house and the ADU and paying a pretty penny for it. So, anybody else?
Uh, I don't know if you guys want to discuss about, uh, what was brought up regarding H, the H overlay, um, or you guys are.
Uh. Unless we don't have any questions, then we can start deliberation.
We are, we are.
What, what I'm getting from the staff is, is that we have no legal control over those things anyways, uh, as we stand for those H overlay zones, uh, you know, to put any restrictions. Yes, you could convert, not convert, uh, because they could do that anyways, uh, with the current codes. So, you know, I don't know if we are able to put any type of restrictions on the H overlay zones, uh, you know, as a part of our conditions here.
And the way I see and from what I understood when Ms. Asp, uh, explained, uh, there are no regulations or there are no restrictions right now that would stop a homeowner or a developer to, to, um, turn a barn or a unit into a ADU, from what I understand.
Um, at the moment, as the ordinance is drafted, um, you know, sort of the compromise that we were kind of trying to brainstorm, if this was huge concern, um, and in particular to ADUs, you wanted to limit it, limit it to the existing primary residence, that may be one way to, um, to maybe control that. I don't think there's any way that we can, we can carve out something that says you may not get rid of stables.
Yeah, but you can, uh, you, but you can write in there, thou shall not use the stable as an ADU.
I don't think that's.
That's, no, this is a new way of looking at it.
Members of the planning commission, I'm not sure under the building code that we can tell somebody that they cannot convert a structure, a legal structure, into another legal structure because it's a ministerial act. We can only use building code standards and zoning code standards to control how it's built and, and obviously if design review applies. Um, I mean, the compromise, the idea with this compromise was really to get to the heart of what the issue is with the H zone, which is that to prevent conversion of horsekeeping facilities and if you restrict an ADU to the existing square footage of the inside of the house, you are completely avoiding, um, going to the horsekeeping facilities. Um, certainly you can completely exempt, um, the H zone from having ADUs. That is another option. I mean, there are lots of policy decisions here and I'm not trying to dictate that decision. I'm just trying to, um, explain where we were coming from. Cause Ms. Asp and I consulted on this particular aspect.
Uh, fundamentally, I don't agree with, well, I don't agree that you can't say you can't have an ADU in a barn. I, I don't agree with that. But I'm not going to go there. I'm not interested in that. Question. If we say that you must, uh, you're limited to the, to the main, uh, to the main house for your ADU purposes, um, we could do that, right?
Yes.
Uh, also if we say that in the H overlay zone, thou shall not have ADUs, that doesn't mean that they can't have guest houses, right? Because it's a different animal. It's a horse of a different color.
Correct.
Okay, yeah, I, okay. Yeah, because I'm very interested in protecting that, uh, environment. And, and here's why. One of the things that I'm proud of about Glendale is that we have all manner of housing, from the very simple to the very complicated, to the very urban, to the very bucolic. Uh, if we can have this, why the heck not? 211 properties, let's spend a couple of minutes trying to protect them. Okay, that's my two cents worth.
So let me understand the level of your protection. Uh, that what you're suggesting is if there is a barn with structures, the four walls.
Concrete floor, so on and so forth, yes.
That barn cannot be converted to an ADU.
Right.
Is what you're telling me.
Right.
But that barn, it does not preclude if the FAR allows for them to build an ADU next to the barn, however offensive the flies or the smell may get, is what you're telling me.
That's what I'm saying, but I mean, you know better than me that the market is not.
About the offensive smells?
No, 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 not the offensive smell. Why would anybody do that? I mean, the idea is, you know, i- if I want, remember, let's go to the, to the synonym for these things, granny flat. Would you put your grand, grandmother next to a barn? No. So they're not going to build an ADU next to a barn. Now, if it's big enough, they're going to put it on the, across the property, you know, you know, on a nice park. Put granny there, but not next to the barn. We, we know.
Okay. And, and so let me, the, I, I don't have a problem with protection specifically for that zone. But I don't want anything that is going to be written, if we are advising or if we are recommending this to the council, for it to come across that you cannot take any other accessories that is in residential units and convert it to, uh, an ADU, if such thing exists. For the Rancho area, I don't have an issue that you cannot take a barn and turn it into a. But by the way, to me, it, it, that's an oxymoron because you're going to lose value of your property if you do something like that. I mean, if, 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 if you believe as much as I do in the market forces, I don't believe anybody in their right mind will do something like that. But having said that, I agree with the Chairman.
Uh, I think to kind of follow up on what Commissioner Asidorian, uh, chairperson has, um, been speaking about, uh, what you have suggested here would basically protect the area. And if anyone is interested, they would have to carve out a section of their home and kind of have, let's say, a door in the back or in a way that he wouldn't. So that's where, that's what we're going to be voting on tonight. And that's what you've been recommending, correct?
That it was an offer for discussion and if you're interested in that kind of compromise, it would have to be in the primary residence. It would restrict from, if you have a guest house, I mean, that's, I'm just going to lay this out on the table too. You have a guest house, you have a detached garage. You'd be prohibited from, from converting those accessory buildings and structures.
But you're assuming a guest house, a detached garage, plus a barn where a horse facility already exists.
If you're, if you're assuming all of those, those amenities.
Uh, so, so, so then what you do is that, I mean, let's think about that for a moment. You'll take the guest house and convert it into an ADU. You would not go out and make the ADU as part of your house, right?
But you wouldn't be allowed if we, if we were to vote on it tonight. You would only be allowed to convert a portion of your own home into an ADU.
Cause not every H overlay property has a guest house.
But if you were to add that, that you, you stipulate that it is, you have, it has to be part of your main house. In my opinion, if, I mean, there are all kinds of variations and there is so many targets you can actually pinpoint. If you have a guest house already, you take that and you convert it into an ADU.
Okay, so that, that's kind of adding a layer here to this conversation.
Right. But, but if you don't have a guest house now, what Commissioner Shbazian is suggesting is maybe then you want to make part of your main house as an ADU. I mean, there's all kinds of variations you can go. Look, I, I don't know how you will come up with a language, but as an advisory group to the council, we need to let them know that this is a real concern, that they don't want a horse facility to be demolished and/or a barn to be demolished or replaced by a, an ADU. That's what your.
Uh, actually, what I was trying to say was, and I think that's what, um, Ms. Asp was trying to say as well, the only way they'll be able to have an ADU is to carve out a portion of the home. So the guest house can't be converted, the garage can't be converted, of course, the barn can't be converted. It would only be the home. And I would assume that would make it more difficult, um, if, if, you know, if they wanted to, to convert it.
Is that the direction that we're going? I don't think that's, that was the conversation.
That's not the, yeah. Look, the, 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 the major thrust, the major goal here is to be able to keep, uh, the, the barns and the horse facilities intact.
Yes. So because we want to keep that, we, we're trying, well.
Well, let them, let them figure out how they're going to come up with the rest of it, right? That's what we are suggesting.
Okay.
Now, if there is a sane way of doing it, to me, again, I'm saying, it's an oxymoron. I mean, it's counterintuitive. You would not do away with your horsekeeping facility in order to put an ADU when you have come in the Rancho and bought because you like horses. I understand out of the 211 or so, maybe about four, four or five may not, they just like watching horses go by. I get all of that. But altogether, I don't think that's going to be a major concern. Truly, I believe that, so.
Mr. Chairman, if I'm, if I might, just a reminder, um, if, if a barn was converted to an ADU, you would need to meet all the building codes for residential. You'd also need to meet the zoning code and, and actually move that if that facility is, the setback of that facility is too close, you'd have to move that and meet the setback for a residential dwelling unit. So in a practical sense, same thing. Somebody, it's counterintuitive, somebody that buys a, a horse property probably wouldn't convert it. But let's say they do, there are still some practical hurdles that might dissuade them because they do need to, to make sure that that facility meets building code as a residential use. Probably have to beef up the walls, um, maybe a sprinkler system depending on how big you allow them to be. Um, and again, setback, you might have to move that building altogether.
But I think, Mr. Chair, that the, 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 both speakers' concern was in the unlikely event that that happens and that turns into a chain event. That may affect the character of the 211 or so homes. That's what the concern is.
Yeah, and we're not talking about a lot of properties.
Yeah. And so I don't think.
It's worth.
It has a massive, uh, uh, implication, but it has implication enough for that special part of Glendale to stay the way it is. So if we can come up with a language that we prefer horses to in-laws. At least I do. Uh, then I think, you know, I'm okay with that.
Uh, I have a question from our legal team. Um, so if, let's say we put a restriction on an H, H zone, uh, wouldn't that kind of open gates for other zones to come back and have a discussion similar to this? And, and again, I'm all for the protection of the, um, neighborhood. It's a small neighborhood as we've been discussing. But just kind of looking at it in a legal terms in the future, wouldn't that kind of bring up issues? What I was trying to bring up earlier was, um, to kind of preserve the neighborhood, but at the same time give the option of, uh, anyone who might be interested in the future to have that option to add and, and create a tool, a, an ADU unit. Um, and it wouldn't change the character of the neighborhood because as we've been discussing, the entrance would be hidden and so on and so forth. As we've been, uh, bringing it up, uh, the garage won't be converted, the, uh, the guest unit won't be converted and the barn won't be touched. So that was one thing I just wanted to, you to answer. So would that be, would that kind of open the floodgates for, let's say, the hillside overlay or some other overlay to come back and, and request something similar?
Uh, members of the planning commission, certainly, uh, that, you know, might have that impact, uh, potential impact. Um, I mean, that just remains to be seen. But, um, I don't think that, you know, once this gets voted on, I, I'm not sure it's going to be amended again unless there's a huge outcry and a, and a really good reason why a particular zone needs a carve out. So.
Alright, so I guess you get the gist of what we're after.
I believe so, yeah.
Very good. Uh, I, I have a question and then I'd, I'd like to kind of tell you where I'm headed with this thing. What is our administrative exception rule for adding square footage to either an accessory or, um, to a home? I think it's 120 feet.
I'm not sure I follow.
I think, I think it was, it used to be 101, 220 feet, something like that. Still 100. Is it still 100? It's still, okay.
Just so I'm clear, are we talking about adding on without required parking?
Without going to DRB and all kinds of stuff.
Oh, um, for, for design review, for modifications or additions to a house, it's 700 in the rear, uh, and up to 200 square feet in the front.
But the 120 feet is if you want to have an addition without going through the, uh, the entire process, I believe. And it's called an administrative exception.
So the administrative exception is, um, there's about 14 of them that allow minor modifications to zoning standards, like parking, any numeric standard, things like that. I think what you're referring to.
And in building, it was up to 120 feet, you found out.
It's up to, it's up to 100 square feet if you wanted to add on to your, your house, things like a bathroom, uh, things like that. With, if you don't have like a two-car required garage.
Okay.
So that's, that's one scenario.
So now the other question is the following. Because in my opinion, uh, and I understand the thinking and the logic between the 500 and this discussion about mansionization, I get all of that. But in my opinion, um, I was always thinking that an, an ADU at around 600 or 650 foot would do, uh, would be the right size. But that's my opinion. My question is, if we were to, uh, heed to what the community wants, which is the 500 square feet, what keeps somebody to come out after building or even during building the ADU unit, uh, not ask for an administrative exception of adding another 120 feet or so to it? Is that possible?
Uh.
Cause that's in our code.
I could not prevent somebody from applying for that, but I believe the findings of the administrative exception would, would be impossible to make. The findings for administrative exception are, uh, there's a substantial design improvement or there are space restrictions on a property. So if you, if you're wanting to go bigger, I, I'm not seeing that you could make the, the space restriction, uh, finding fly. So it, it is an option. I don't see that those find, any of those.
Would apply to the ADU.
Okay.
Uh, I had a, I had a procedural question. I'm assuming that, uh, the motion to be read, to, to be made, to be seconded and to be voted on is on page seven?
Yes.
Uh.
But I think the language has to be modified by.
That's what I'm asking. Um, the modification, uh, how would you, do you want this to be read? And then during the city council presentation, you're going to tell them that the city. And then during the city council presentation, you're going to tell them that the city, that the planning commission had specific concerns regarding the H overlay?
That would be fine. I mean, you can state that as kind of added on to this.
Yes. Okay.
I think there was some language on page five that kind of...
The page five language...
That's one thing to look at. I wasn't sure the motion was just for the, was for the... Was the motion for, basically, it's a yes or no type of a motion? Or we actually, we're going to make changes to the motion? Is that what we're doing right now?
Well, this motion basically says we are okay with the presentation we got. And then you, I mean, to the extent that the members of the commission are desirs of tweaking the presentation somewhat, they usually add the language and they try to garner support from their colleagues.
Okay, so let's say the square footage, parking, or any other issues that there are, we could just add it to the bottom of the motion and it could be presented.
You could do that. That's a potential, you know, that's one approach, sure. Thus far, all we have is the...
The barn clause.
The barn clause.
And I don't have a problem with that.
We're closing the barn door.
But I would, and I don't know how you feel about this. An ADU, when you, and again, this is why I was asking the, and I know where the staff comes from and the community comes from, the five hundred, because we use the five hundred square feet guest houses that we've had. And really, what we're doing is that we're allowing now a kitchen in it, is basically what it boils down to. And I get all of that. It is my opinion, my opinion alone, by the way, and it all depends on how you feel about this thing. In my opinion, you put a larger lot at a disadvantage. When and if you're applying the FAR to the lot and this five hundred or less has to fit within that FAR, what you're essentially saying is if a lot has fifteen thousand or twenty thousand square feet, you cannot use that FAR because now it overcompensates you to build a larger unit. And I understand the conversation about we don't want to turn our residential neighborhoods into rental unit neighborhoods or multi-family neighborhoods. I get that. I do not believe the addition of a hundred or a hundred and fifty square feet would do that. So my, and this is again only my, you know, recommendation that the council, and this is only, by the way, we're an advisory body and we advise the council. The council makes up their own mind. I would go with the route of, if the FAR allows to allow to go anywhere between six to six hundred and fifty foot. If it doesn't, then it doesn't. I mean, that's all there is to it. Those are my thoughts.
But then in that case, residential units that are smaller would also have a larger unit on them. So it kind of would benefit the larger...
No, they still have to meet the FAR. Whatever you're building, if your main house is a thousand and you're building five hundred square feet, that fifteen hundred square feet should be within your FAR.
Question.
Yes?
Yes.
Question, so when we make the recommendation today, you know, we have individual commissioners, you know, comments here. And then we also have a barn comment and all that. Would that all be incorporated into the thing? Or are we voting on this specifically what he's talking about, about the numbers? Or is that just a big part of the recommendation?
That is up to the discretion of the commission to consider everything. What your motion is and whatever it includes will absolutely be shared with council as well as some, you know, individual comments that we hear.
If we want to do this appropriately, we will take a vote on the barn clause and you'll take a vote on the size, basically. That's the appropriate way of doing it, right?
That's up to you.
So I mean, let me make a motion to include, for the lack of, in order to be truncating this whole thing, that the barn clause, that the barns in the rancher area cannot be converted into ADUs.
How about garages and guest houses? Are we not addressing that? No, okay.
I'll support that. So I made a motion. Is there a second for that? I'll support that. Ma'am?
Planning Commissioners, Astorian.
Yes.
Lee.
Aye.
Shabazian.
Can I counter motion or do I have to?
You have to vote no.
Okay, no.
Chairperson Manukian.
I vote no. So that will, that means we have a tie, which means, now you can sing your piece.
So what I would recommend is the barn, the guest house, the garage, none of those could be converted. They should stay as is, and if someone is interested in having a unit, they could only have it in their primary residence, as it was stated on page five.
Discussion?
So the...
And I think that would preserve the...
What you're doing is, you're adding, you're amending the motion that we have with the following statement, which is what you're taking from page five, right?
So I think that the ADUs should be allowed only within the primary residence in the edge overlay zone and this is to preserve the edge overlay zone more properly.
That's what page five says, and that's what we're accepting.
No.
No.
What you were voting on just now was that...
Just the barn clause.
In the, yes, in the edge overlay zone, barns cannot be converted into ADUs.
Yeah, and they're accepting all these conditions here.
Everything else is okay.
Yeah, everything is, I don't understand what this is all about, but we are accepting this.
If it meets the FAR, if you have a guest house that now by an administrative exception, you can add another hundred and twenty feet to it and turn it into an ADU, there's nothing wrong with it.
Yeah, I voted no to that. I don't think we should.
That's what it was.
That's, she's against that, but her response, which in my opinion is the more elegant solution, simply because by just making one statement, you are excluding a host of other issues. And it's much simpler to get your brain around, wrap your brain around the idea that, listen, in this neighborhood, you cannot, but for the main residence, you cannot have an ADU anywhere else. Once, once you, and that just, you know, makes a lot of problems go away.
Well, let me ask the city attorney a question. When would this kind of a language be considered taking?
A taking, members of the planning commission, generally to sum it up in one sentence, is when you've denied a property owner of all economic benefit from the property, and this certainly would not do that, in my opinion.
So if we go with the motion, which is a test as exhibited, and amended by adding the sentence on page five of our staff report, will, can I expect support?
Okay.
So how would it be?
Give me the motion.
Okay, the motion would be in the H overlay zone, ADUs will be allowed only within the primary residence.
It already says that.
Where?
Right here. Page five.
That's the staff report. This is the motion.
That's what we're accepting.
But that also allows them to convert the garage and also allows them to convert the guest house. So we are only allowing, oh, I see what you're saying.
Members of the planning commission...
Okay, now, okay.
If I could clarify, the ordinance, the draft ordinance that you are voting on recommending to the city council does not include any special provisions regarding the H overlay zone. That was included in the staff report as a discussion point, however, it's not in the draft ordinance.
So we're trying to add it into the motion, yes.
So if you're having a motion, you need to actually say, in the H overlay zone, ADUs will be allowed only within the residence.
That's correct.
Thank you very much. Okay, so...
So I'll make a motion on what Chairperson just brought.
Do I have a second? Okay, I'll make the motion myself.
Pass it down.
I move that...
Your advice, right?
I move that this project is statutorily exempt from CEQA because this ordinance adopts second units, also known as, also known as accessory dwelling units to implement provisions of Government Code Section 65852.1 and 65852.2 as set forth in Section 21080.17 of the Public Resources Code and that upon consideration of the proposed ordinance relating generally to establishing standards for accessory dwelling units, ADUs, at a public hearing that the planning commission hereby recommend that the city council adopt the proposed amendments of Title Thirty of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995. In addition, that in the H overlay zone, ADUs will be allowed only within the residence. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion?
I'm all discussed now.
No, because that would not constitute a taking.
No.
How would that? All right, but that, you see, if you pass that motion now, you have passed the motion in its entirety. I have an issue with the size. In my opinion, the size should be six hundred to six hundred and fifty feet. So if these commissioners will accept a friendly amendment to the size, I don't know if I want to, I don't want to be, no pun intended, do a horse trading here, but by limiting the ADU to the existing main structure or the house...
Are we doing the, are you talking about the H overlay zone properties as a general proposition?
We're just adding the H overlay zone discussion, if we agree on a language, to the motion.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with this motion at all. I don't have a problem with the way that this has been presented. I think everything is just fine, right? And so that's where it's at, with the exception of, my concern was the size, basically. And of course, the barn clause. Now, how we can reach there, I'm open to it.
Tell me about the size problem yet?
The five hundred square feet is what is being asked by the community and the task force has suggested that. It is my opinion that if you get closer to between six to six hundred, to be exact, to six hundred square feet, it will not make a huge difference. It will not take our residential areas and turn them into homes. And the reason I'm coming up with that is very simple. There are lot sizes in the city of Glendale that are large, that are larger than five thousand or six thousand square feet. By limiting it only to five hundred square feet, and when you say that you are going to consider the FAR in order for anybody to build an ADU, you're actually taking something away from folks that have or own larger lot sizes. You're putting them at a disadvantage. So I think as a compromise, another hundred square feet should not be that difficult. That's my reasoning.
So Chair, would you like to take the heart up, you know, to just all buy it off and then see if...
I don't understand, no, no, I'm kind of confused here. You, the five, you want to take the five hundred to six hundred?
Six hundred.
That's it?
That's it.
That's your claim? Okay.
I'm not supporting that.
From what I've been hearing and reading in the emails, most residents that have responded to this, they are requesting that we don't add to the five hundred. And I would have to, of course, support what the residents are requesting.
Okay, given what I'm hearing from my fellow commissioner, from the commission, then a motion is on the table. It has been seconded. Roll call, please.
Planning Commissioners, Astorian.
No.
Lee.
Aye.
Shabazian.
Aye.
And Chairperson Manukian.
Aye.
With that, moving on to item eight, Community Development Department updates. Do we have any? No?
Yes.
Yes.
I think you should tell the folks that we voted...
Oh, we voted to recommend this to the city council for its...
The way it was.
As it...
With the five hundred feet.
Mr. Chairman, if it pleased you, I'll come here to the podium so that I can see all your face. I was stuck in the corner there. My name is Philip Lanzaphame. I'm the Director of Community Development. And I do have two announcements, two things to alert you to. First, I want to wish you all a happy holiday season. I hope your Thanksgiving was a very good celebration. Second, I wanted to alert you to an action that the planning department will be taking, subject to something you may want to do or may not want to do. That's what I'm here for. Twelve Oaks is a property that is up in the Montrose area. It is an assisted living facility. And through, no fault of the foundation that owns the property, they have found themselves not operating, not physically operating for a period of time. However, we believe, given a lot of the information that they've given us, we believe that they have had every intent to continue to operate and in fact have never abandoned their use. They're there on a variance. Some of those things are, number one, that the original benefactor had granted the property to be a care facility in perpetuity. So we know from the get-go that that was the mission, that was always the intention of the property. The group, the foundation that owns the property, they did engage in a lawsuit with their then-manager of the property to maintain it as a facility. They have, once they were successful in that, they have done a search for a management company that will run it as an assisted living facility, exactly as it has in the past, since, I should say, the nineteen forties. They've done fundraising to raise the funds to do the maintenance and upgrade that is necessary. They've obtained permits for that work. They have had a caretaker on site. They've paid the insurance. They've kept their state license up to date. They have got a business registration certificate. So all of these things, they continue to pay utilities, all of these things indicate to staff that in fact they never abandoned their use, their intended use, and therefore the variance should stay intact and that they can go ahead and operate. That's our interpretation. There is a provision of our code that allows the reviewing authority, which is this planning commission, to terminate a variance if in fact the use has been interrupted or abandoned. We don't think that's the case, but I wanted to alert you to it. And should you feel the need to agendize it, we would come back. I will say that I'm here tonight, and if you're in agreement and don't care to agendize it, we'll be issuing a letter tomorrow so that Twelve Oaks can reopen and start to house the seniors that are set to move back in. So really, for you, if you wish to agendize it, if you don't, let us know and we'll be issuing that letter tomorrow. Council is here along with staff as well as two members from the Twelve Oaks Foundation. It is a comment, so there's not a lot of discussion we can have on it, but I did want to make you aware.
Okay, so what you're telling us is there's a, there's a old folks home that wants to operate in the city of Glendale, and you see no problem with that?
It is a senior care facility that has been operating since the forties.
Okay.
Yes. Yes.
So if we don't act on it or do, don't do anything on it, you're going to send them a letter that says?
Our interpretation is you've continued the, the use of the variance, and that you can continue to use it.
All right. I have no problem with that. Does anybody else?
One question. Do they have to, for variance purposes, do they have to come back and reapply for variances, or does that stay?
Though, as long as they operate, as long as they operate under the existing conditions. There was a time, I want to say back in two thousand and ten was the last time they wanted to expand the kitchen facility, so they did need to come back for the variance. Since that time, our code has changed, so it does not allow for variances in a residential neighborhood. So it'll operate as it is today.
And so, and so, this discussion would not even have been necessary if it were not the time, time period that maybe, and misconstrued as abandoned, is the time period that they were trying to renovate the place so that folks can come back. I don't have a problem with that either.
Thank you very much for the direction.
Very good.
Comments from commissioners?
Can I just make one announcement? Just a reminder that our special planning commission hearing is next week, on Wednesday, the thirteenth.
Yes.
When will we get the packets?
Soon.
And I would like to close this meeting with all of us, no, wait. All of us have our friends and neighbors who have been suffering a great deal over the last couple of few days. Let's keep them in our minds. With that, we are adjourned.